Just have a read off the computer. The slides are small.
Okay. Thank you.
This problem.
We're intimidated by the new setting. We're first.
Good evening. Is this on?
Yes.
Thank you for having us tonight. We're here to share with you our journey of a social emotional learning curriculum and how we became involved with applying to become a school of character. We're going to start with explaining what social emotional learning is, why it's important, and how we teach our students in a way to help them to become successful, independent, and caring people. Yeah, we'd like to start by introducing our committee, part of our committee. I'm Michelle Byrne. I teach first grade at Riverview School.
I'm Todd McAven and one of the school counselors at Riverview.
Nicole Sprom, one of the school counselors as well. Trish Shelley, teach fourth grade at Riverview.
Kristin Andrews, one to run A, B, and C.
Tina Zierakos, principal.
Okay, so I'm starting off by talking about what is actually social emotional learning. And so if you can see up there, there's actually a wheel that I'll explain in a minute. But social emotional learning also goes by SEL. We're going to be referencing that a few times in here. So SEL is the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relations, and make responsible decisions. So up here, castle.org is where we have this wheel from. And if you see in the middle, where it says self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. In the center, those five things pretty much describe social emotional learning and the five main areas that we want students to be very strong and confident in upon leaving Riverview. If students are strong in those five areas, then they'll be strong adults. If you could see along those five areas, it says classroom, school, and home and community. So it's not like we just want to teach these skills in school and then let them go. These are skills obviously that at home are being reinforced. And to go over a few of them, for example, self-awareness. Pretty much, we want students to be aware of themselves, their strengths, their weaknesses, areas they need to grow. Social awareness, meaning be aware of other people's cultures, diversity, knowing more about the world, opening their mind. Relationship skills, we of course want people to be able to interact with each other and listen to each other's opinions. Responsible decision-making, that goes along with safety as well. But in the day-to-day life, we often want children to make the best choices we can. That's pretty much a lot of our day in school. Now, final one, self-management. Being able to manage your emotions, control yourself, take a deep breath, especially in this, you know, political climate, is probably, is a very strong one, self-management. But we want all these kids to be able to actually have these strong social emotional skills. So in looking at all of these, which leads to why? Why do we want them to have them? You know, what benefit do they bring? So Nicole, what's going to teach you about that?
So why social emotional learning? Schools have 95% of people aged five to 17 for at least six hours a day for 13 years. And we know we have them actually longer than six hours a day in our district. That's a long time, but we're with them, we can influence them. In a meta-analysis of 213 studies involving 270,000 students, the students who participated in evidence-based SEL programs showed an 11 percentile point gain in academic achievement compared to those who did not participate in any SEL programs. SEL provides students with many of the skills employers consider critical to success on the job. So according to a 2013 study of 704 employers, half of those surveys said they had trouble finding recent graduates to fill vacancies in their companies. Even though applicants had technical skills, they lacked communication, adaptability, decision-making, and problem-solving skills needed to do the job. We could go on and on about this, but that's where we left off for the why social emotional learning.
Okay.
So where we came from, kind of what we've been doing the last couple of years. We've been working on our character, sorry. We've been working on our social and emotional character development program for several years. First, we had three smaller teams. We had the Sustainable New Jersey team. We had the staff morale team, and then we have us, the SEL team. We were a bigger team originally when we started with the United Way and the Youth Empowerment Alliance, and we, throughout the last year and a half, broke into three smaller teams. It was about 15 people total, so each team was roughly like five or six people. So we also have been working with the Youth Empowerment Alliance. We go to the school support network meetings. They're once a month on Wednesday mornings for about three hours. Some of the topics that they go over are school climate, trauma in schools, stress and anxiety for staff and students. And it's usually just a nice three hours, once a month, where you can go and get free training on those kinds of topics. It's open to superintendents, principals, counselors, teachers, community, and that's the school support network meetings. We also have been doing the past year or two, we started the morning meetings last spring. We did that with you in October with our student culture and climate team, if you can recall that. And then we also have our SEL curriculum. It's a curriculum by Dr. Elias from Rutgers. It's called Social Decision Making, Social Problem Solving. We started that this fall, and the kids have really enjoyed it. It's an evidence-based, research-based program. And with that, we'll talk about that naturally a little bit later in a few more slides. And then we also have a peer mentor program that we've been doing for four years now at Riverview. And that's a program where children who are having social difficulties can have a peer buddy. You know, every week they get a new peer buddy. They do morning meetings with that peer buddy. They have lunch with that peer buddy. They play recess with that peer buddy. And that changes every week. So students who struggle with their social skills kind of get some new friends every Monday. And it's just been a really good program for our school, and that's kind of what we've been doing for the last couple of years. Now, I'll talk about the school of character application.
Thank you, Nicole.
So this kind of all led us to a journey that we filled out our application for school of character. And how that really happened was in August, I was asked to speak to a panel with United Way called Healthy Schools, Healthy Students. We had a bunch of great guest speakers, researchers, new people in the field, and I was asked to speak on that panel. After speaking on that panel, I was approached by one of the mediators, and she said, you know what? You guys should apply for the school of character, which I really hadn't heard from before. She's like, even if you don't get it the first year, which is very difficult, we'll give you information, they'll give you a rubric, they'll give you insights on how you can better improve your movement and collaborate your efforts. So we rushed together and we filled out the school of character application, which was very intense, had 11 major principles, included everything from attendance to discipline policy to school mission. And as I look up there, it's the 11 principals spelled incorrectly, so I apologize for that right away. I guess I just wanted a lot of principles there. All about the stuff there. Right, that's, got to put a little principle in there. Teacher, so we did all of that. We were called January 2017, and they told us that we did not indeed receive the national or the state level, but we got honorable mention for all of our efforts. And it gives us lots of good insights on what we can do to continue to improve, so that kind of leads us into where we're going now. But they did say that we received honorable mention because in just a few years, we were able to really pull a lot of things together. And they asked us to attend the conference on May 19th. So a few of us from the SEL committee will go there to receive that honor and to spend another day learning about what we could do to continue working on positive school climate, healthy students. It's kind of all encompassing. A lot of it is supported by the United Way and the YEA as well, so we're excited for that. And all of that has led us into our next steps, and that's what we're going to talk about next. So thank you.
Okay. So one of our first steps was when we received the rubric back stating how we could better improve ourselves to possibly reach this goal later on, one of them was about creating a school mission statement. So we decided to send out an email to all of the staff to ask them what three words they would want to represent the students of Riverview when they left our school. And many of the words that came back included words like gratitude and empathy and kindness and how we want the Riverview students to be represented. So we, together, taking that information, teamed together and made a mission statement that would represent Riverview School and our community. And our mission statement is as follows. Riverview School educates the whole child by engaging all learners in a rigorous academic curricula and social emotional character development. Our learning community fosters respectful, responsible, and empathetic citizens that are able to meet challenges with grit and grace. We're getting this mission statement out there. The PTA has looked at it, and we've also had other parent input. Once it's finalized, we'll have it visible on our website and hanging somewhere in the school as well. Then we also wanted to take those words that were listed from our staff, and we actually realized that we could have the words spelt out, the acronym R O C K, so when you look down, responsible, respectful, optimistic, compassionate, kind, empathetic, team player. So the kids can always hear that acronym, is what is a Riverview Rocket and how are we supposed to handle ourselves in those acronyms that ever represents the Riverview student. Okay, so I want to talk to you about service learning and student voice. So another thing that we took from our school of character application was that they put a lot of emphasis on preparing our students to be citizens, global citizens. And one thing they wanted to focus on was self-awareness, but also awareness of others. So not just their social peers and the school community, but also Danville's community and the local community. So Todd already showed you the circular rubric, which talks about self-awareness. And Nicole also talked to you about morning meetings, which helps deal with their social peers and interact appropriately. And also in terms of our, well, one thing we realized was that we have school groups to K kids and the school culture and climate team, and they actually raise money for charitable organizations. And those charities affect, for example, our local neighborhoods, St. Peter's Orphanage, and also, for example, the Clover, St. Jude's, Clover Foundation, which actually is in Uganda, and it raised money for children, their health and meditation. And so what we were thinking was perhaps in the future, not just to raise money for these organizations, but to help educate our students about the people who we're raising money for. So they have a little bit more awareness, and they can make projects and sort of bring an educational element to that. And lastly, last year we took a poll, and we found that students wanted more of a voice. So this year, we actually did a Rocket, Rocket the Vote around the time of the national election, and it was actually a nice group vote, to vote for which I assume to have in the cafeteria. But just to give the students a little bit more feeling of empowerment in school.
Yes, we also have up there a Google Doc for morning meetings. And when we came in October and had the students leave a morning meeting, which is great, it was our first step in having the students realize that you have to look someone in the eye, greet them with a handshake, or high five, fist bump. But we also realized that we needed to have a little bit more direct SEL instruction in the morning meeting as well, and to move, step it up a little bit more than just a greeting and focusing on that relationships area. We wanted to also add the social awareness area and responsible decision-making, so we created a Google document we can share with all the staff where we listed those five different SEL competencies, one per day, and made kind of like a catchy title for it, and then put all these resources listed on it, so all the staff has that resource and that they can look on Monday for Mindset Monday and pick something if they want, whether it be a video or an activity, that can help them kind of diversify their morning meetings and kind of change the topic more on a weekly basis. So that's what the Google Doc Morning Meeting 2.0 was. And Nicole's going to share about our shared language.
So as you were saying before about the new curriculum that Todd and I have been kind of bringing about this school year, the social decision-making, social problem-solving, we want to have more of a common language that the kids can get comfortable with. So this fall, we introduced them to listening position. And basically, it's sit or stand straight, and they're all pretty good at this already. Face the speaker or source of sound and look towards the speaker or source of sound. I always tell the kids, we don't go to the rock concert and face the wrong way, you know? Not that I'm going to rock concerts when I'm teaching, I'm going to rock concerts. Much more enjoyable. But basically, if we can have common language and where we just say listening position, in fact, we've done that at several assemblies already, and they're already like, you know, so it's just having that common language in the classroom or in the APR, we think will be really helpful. We are also doing something with communication styles called Monster, Mouse, and Me. So Monster is the aggressive communication style, and Mouse is the passive communication style, and then Me or Be Your Best is the assertive communication style, which we say most days in school, you can be assertive. You don't need to be the Monster or the Mouse. And, you know, with that, you know, the kids love learning about this stuff. And you say Monster, Mouse, and Me, and they know exactly what I mean. Best, which is the Me in the middle there, assertive. Best actually stands for body posture, eye contact, speech, so what you're saying, and then T, tone of voice. So all those things combined together, we kind of teach them through and break it apart, and they love it. They like to role-play and act out. But if we can have that common language in our building, I think that'll be helpful in our little journey here.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We've enjoyed sharing with you our social emotional learning journey. We got a lot of really great feedback from completing the application, and we're continuing to look forward to ways that we can enhance our social emotional learning curriculum. And we're looking forward to also reapplying for the application next year. Thank you so much.
Now, it's a shame that they took lots of votes, but actually, it's okay. No, we're more common. What struck me about so much of what they were saying is how much of it came out of the strategic planning conference agenda, right? It was amazing. We had local students, the ancillae, and all of those things, the things that we can talk about. That's true. Really, that's really cool. Okay. Now we can actually start with regular partner Steve, you have superintendent comments?
Just a little update on some goals. So I'm very proud to announce we have 681 downloads in our app. So we're moving towards that 1,000 download goal, which would be by October, when the app was released. I'm pretty, I mean, I'm actually very happy to see 681 people download it. So it's becoming relevant, which is good. We wanted to just update you on some of the goals. One of the things was strategic plan, as you've been apprised of, and we've gone through the meetings. Tonight, you'll approve the goals. Then we'll have the entire plan ready to be approved in April. From that, the administration will write the action plans, will create a poster, and the poster will be created and then just posted around the district. We should have one in here too, and always hopefully live by the things that we just spent a lot of time developing. Communications improvement plan. We created the survey, we approved it. The survey will expire on 3/28, so it's coming up this week. As of March 22nd, 371 participants were, 371 people out of 2016 that it was sent to. So that actually makes it relevant statistically. And I know Laura probably heard you say, she knows I'll take a statistics class, so I figured that out at the cabinet here. The results will be sent at the Board of Ed meeting, so most likely the April 10th, maybe April 24th meeting, we'll talk about the, this goal, finalizing this goal, deciding where we want to go forward, talk to you about the results. Our past meetings are scheduled. One, Dr. Cullis, did via WebEx for 25 participants on March 6th. Genesis, Genesis report cards and interns were sent via Genesis. Scheduling modules used for value conferences. And the forms for the mandatory first day materials were done via Genesis. And to me, they were very successful as a parent, like being able not to have to go through a bunch of paper, but be able to read it on the screen and approve it. We have kindergarten registration was online. These are all things that we're doing, we're going to try to approve communications. We did our kindergarten registration online. That was a huge success, right? Dr. Cullis really got out in front of that, used a Google survey, and Dr. Cullis was able to balance kindergarten enrollment through the district with our new enrollment policy. We are still continuing to update and improve all of our Friday folder, everything like that, we're working on trying to make it better every time. We did a marketing campaign for the new, for the new app, through the neighbor news, social media, Friday folder, also direct email. District Tech Committee is also taking a look at our, at our website. We will have to roll out a new website this year due to ADA compliance. Our website, the company that we have right now, will no longer support our website or that brand of website after December. So we will move to a different website this summer, and we're looking at websites that will integrate with our, with our school messenger system right now. And the District Tech Committee is involved in trying to work on picking one of the formats. So we do expect to roll out a new website, summer of 2017. The community interest meetings with stakeholders to gauge support for reader volatation and increase community utilization of school fields and make a recommendation to a board, that was one of my very goals. So we planned to advertise and conduct the meetings. We held, we held two meetings. We're going to keep this group forum, continue to use it for, to come up with a solution long-term for our fields. Right now, we feel like we made some good progress, and the groups are interested in participating in cooperation with us in tracking and improving fields. Right now, we're going to move in April, we'll have on the agenda to talk, on the B and G agenda, to talk about allowing town, PAL, baseball, softball, whichever groups are interested to build a softball field, a lady in the back, or recreation softball. Not a high school softball field, it would be a recreation softball. We also, another one of the goals is to conduct at least six articulation meetings with Central Office and MHRD in sending districts. So what we did was we were able to increase the outreach and bring other people in. So we had Dr. Cullis conduct two, one on curriculum, one on math. Technology, we had Samantha conduct one. We had Amy Farley was a visitor at one of our meetings for our homeless liaison, so we had all the homeless liaisons in the group. We also had a PD, Professional Strategic Plan meeting with a gentleman named Dan Gross. And also, these always include all the people from the 505 districts as well. And then on March 6th, we all got together, our academic coaches, had conducted a meeting. The high school district had started instructional coaches this year. As you know, we started them a few years ago, and the other sending districts are looking at expanding into academic coaches for next year. And one of my other goals was to conduct a minimum of 250 walkthroughs. Right now, I've conducted 230 walkthroughs, and we've been utilizing our walkthrough form with Google and also reporting the total from the Google form. The other two, the last two that we have, the data will come in in April, May, after April, May, and the other, the other one was also on the strategic plan, which will be when the entire plan is finished and approved and actually started to be disseminated. And that's my report for today. All right, thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? The communication survey, it expires tomorrow, so is it available tomorrow?
Yes, it's available through the rest of the, right?
Okay, thanks.
I better check on that. It has a setting of midnight, but I don't know if I set it for midnight 3:29 or midnight 3:20. I'll look at it.
Okay. Just because it was available tomorrow, try to push it out a little bit and see if we can get it.
Sure. And, you know, we, we had over 400 actually, as we had the latest time we saw, so sorry about that.
April 4th starts our PERC testing, so we kick off next Tuesday, and that's with 8th and 3rd grades, although it'll run from April 4th through 11. The rest of the part dates can be found on the website. I know the letters have gone home, but if you could always go to the website. The other day, on April 4th, we will be having our first 5th grade placement meeting for parents. And this is really to discuss where the pathways for 5th graders and which courses lead to subsequent courses. So that will be at 7 o'clock at Valley View on Tuesday, April 4th. This concludes this superintendent's report.
Is there anything from the district administration's office?
I don't know if I could have signed this last week, and there was a long line of change, $100 features, they just started like a new initiative, we're not even, for how they should, you know. Can you please sign the public address?
That's all, done? Thank you, Ms. Okay. All right, at this time, 8:27 PM, I'm going to open up for public comments. Anything that you may need to the operation of the district, if you'd like to come up and sign in and announce your name and address. All right, hearing nothing or seeing nothing, close the public comment section, so at 8:27, and let's move on to business.
So just to come back in one second. The floor will expire at midnight, like 12:01 actually, on 3:27. So we have another poll.
Okay, hold business tight, Ms. Mr. Anderson, would you care to take your students?
Sure. If there are no objections, I'd like to remove out of the agencies of blocking food, the following reports from February 2017, treasurer's school monies, board secretary, as well as the education reports, which include report of student enrollment from February 2017, report of medical office February 2017, the affirmation of the HIP reports, HIP case V10, as well as HIP case LV04, and the minutes for the work session, executive session February 13th, special meeting February 21st, and regular executive session on February 27th.
I'll shut it. I think she got you by her, just a second.
No, sorry, Mr. Pass.
Yeah, just so we clarify, on all these reports, we're affirming the reports that we received from the administration. So we're voting, if we vote yes, you're affirming the report that we received from the administration.
That's part of the acceptance.
To accept, correct.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Any questions or comments before we go? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Pass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, we'll move on to business on the personnel. If there are no objections, I would like to move items one through seven as a block. Uh, paying attention to item one, we have an addition of K on the addendum. And also, uh, one E, there is a typo, instead of V, V V for Valley View, we should say R V for River View. Do I have that right? Yes, E is reverbia. Thank you, Mr. Cass. Okay, so we've got our normalish, uh, list of extra pay for school play, hall monitors after school at Valley View, obviously attending River View, related arts nights, the poetry slam, which I'll, I'll get back to in a second. Some resignations, and then we will, uh, family leave act, uh, coming in the government's. And the summer enrichment program, we have the, uh, following teachers who are coming through the registration fees coming in from that program. And also we have, uh, Morris Knolls students who are going to be volunteering for the summer enrichment program. So can someone tell me what a poetry slam is?
I don't.
Ready? Ready, go ahead.
Um, we did last year, it's like a, they learned all about poetry, but they went to, to music and, I won't necessarily say it's rap, but it's kind of like that. So it's like a free-form poetry and they go to music, so.
We do all in music, is that a poetry slam or art to music?
Well, we had music last year, Mr. Forte's son was involved in that, but I guess it wouldn't have to be, but I know, to be more than happy to be involved with it. It replaced, uh, some of the activities that we had in the past. We did like a lead, we had a walk-in, which, but, um, was replaced last year with this. To try to, uh, jerk in, because I can.
And I assume it's happening next month? April is National Poetry Month. When, when all people should walk around and poke in your pocket, that's a whole thing too. Does it happen though? In collaboration as well.
That sounds, that sounds pretty cool.
Can I ask a question? I don't know what it is. So you've mentioned that we have, um, students volunteering.
It's the last one, it's number seven.
Thank you. Um, do, how do, um, people know to get to volunteer?
That was through, that was through, um, Mrs. Johnson. And Mrs. Johnson had a connection with Morris Knolls. And so does Dr. Cullis, do I correct? On, um, something for volunteership?
Well, that's for the U of L.
Right.
Yeah, that's like Morris Society.
So that's really where it comes in. It's not like we put out a, an ad or anything, which is, it's, it's not, actually, one person emailed me and said that they would like to do it.
Okay, so that's.
The connection's with Knolls, uh, Knolls, so Knolls runs those classes, you see them all the time on here for about, you know, on, the, the class is called Ed One-on-One. It's one of their classes, basically an introduction to being a teacher. And they, part of the job, part of the class is to come into our classes, you see them on there all the time, basically the same thing.
So what if other kids in the community wanted to do that, can we, uh?
Yeah, there's.
Find out if there's space available, is to email you?
No, there's gonna be, not, not there, I mean, uh, Mrs. Johnson had a ten or something last year. Daughter, yeah, she'll tell me more.
We have more space for the other people.
Sure. She gets, she'll, I bet she, like, we hadn't asked her about that.
Um, on, on G and H, are these part-time instructional days? They're not, because it's overtime, so I'm assuming it's during the school day though.
This is, this would be when the trip extends, like, Mr. World, uh, he's a, he's a, a full-time aide, but if the trip extends, they need it. Their hours are over at a certain time, the bus might not come back in a half an hour.
Okay.
It's really just a fast.
And then on I?
Yes.
The resignation was like two days after, I mean, this wasn't an effective immediately resignation? We typically see resignations that are like out further instead of two weeks ago.
This is an effective immediately. And just to get everybody aware, if you may not recall, because it was a few months ago, we had a teacher who was experiencing some medical issues in and out of class, who felt that it was disruption to s, to the school day. So we put that teacher as a permanent sub throughout the district. That teacher has the certificate that's required for this job, so we were able to put that teacher in the spot, so we actually rolled up that.
And we, uh, okay?
Yes.
Steve, can you just, and number, uh, can you just explain, Doc's not, um, ending?
Internally?
Yeah, there's, there's a gap in the dates.
That's spring break? The gap is because, um, New Jersey, that only week is not counting, it's the summer, or it's spring break, or any holidays. Is that right?
So September fifteenth, and then returns November thirteenth, correct?
Um, New Jersey, we have absence and September fifteenth, but she's requesting to, like, stay in collaboration until November thirteenth.
So during that time, during your leave time, they still get benefits. During that second phase till the thirteenth, they don't get any, any, uh, benefits.
That's why you're going, that's why you're going to stay, you just empty.
All comments?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to instructional program. Two, careful, Misses.
I would move items one through six as a block. We have a workshop for, uh, Maris, the Business Administrator. We have the list of field trips, the revisions to the school calendar, uh, excuse me, appropriate team for, uh, Family in Front CPR class and no cost to the district. Sorry, CPR class and no cost to the district. Uh, the Board of Education Strategic Goals, and the, uh, excuse me, uh, the Literacy Consultants, uh, for June twenty-second, uh, at a cost of two thousand.
Can I say with the goals, I think, and this might just be interesting, but the last two, it says two and then her, and the first two, it just says her, so we could change some of their all. Same?
Sure.
Developmental, do development culture and create a safe.
Would you provide a rich?
So we're adding two to them?
We're getting rid of two.
Taking two.
I've heard that, but.
I have a tendency to agree, does anyone feel strongly that you should roll twos?
No, I just was trying to clarify what you were saying.
He's super talented.
We're gonna try again. I'm okay with friendly.
Oh, I am too. We're both okay with the friendly.
I just wanted to, uh, for anybody who happens to be watching the video, and for the Board and Administration, just saying thank you for coming up with the strategic planning and the goals. It was, uh, not an easy process to get everything rolling, and I was really happy with the turnout we received from the public at all meetings. And, uh, what we kind of came up with, I'm excited to see the action plans for each one of these, because that's kind of like our own piece of road, but, um, that these from a high-level overview. Uh, I'm excited to see that it's important to, uh, community members and parents, things like well-rounded students, as you know, mentioned, what we just saw. River View obviously shows authority doing things like that, but the opportunity to enhance them and, and build them into, uh, the other schools and things like that are a large benefit. So I'm excited to see focus in a lot of different directions that, uh, are gonna give us not only well-rounded students, but a well-rounded district.
All right, anybody else? Let's see, two days. Let's talk about that, yeah, the calendar, um, I'm sure, I assume that a board member's had a chance to review this. Basically, we're taking the two days, and we're going to take them off from the last week of school. So assuming at this point that we have, we'll do the path, school, and, um, leaving twenty.
Correct. That's a very good one.
Yeah, we're down to twenty, right, we had eighty days a day, and we're going to twenty-first.
But graduation is changed to the sixteenth, right? Valley View graduation is the sixteenth at Morris Knolls.
Right.
And you had some correspondence, you had a conversation with Lakewood Y, even though I, I heard one thing, it sounds like you heard something else happened.
They did.
What are we doing?
And I gotta follow up with that. So meaning that if the Lakewood, if we do have to cut it short, uh, hopefully we don't have more school days, uh, then we would actually, uh, ask the YMCA to offer a program for the two days that are no longer our school days. Another advantage of obviously cutting the school year short, rather than taking away from another day, there could always be the possibility of, of some type of a problem. A gas leak, a water may break, a power outage, something along those lines where you need a daddy, if you give him, say you give him both on the morning of the evening, you look kind of silly, we have to raise people on a Saturday, because we, we avoid the day, and so I think it's, uh, it makes sense to cut it at the end.
And you're okay with changing those?
So what we could say, there's only two this time.
I try to make sure you're okay, I try to know that's your goal, Tom. All right, all right, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to policies, we have, if everyone's okay, I will move these items without objections. We have, uh, a list of, uh, policies for first reading, and one for second reading, zero, one, six, four.
One second.
Conduct of order.
What time is it?
It's called conduct of order.
Did everyone get their packet that Steve's over, he was kind enough to drop off?
Yeah, Mike, I didn't count, you didn't ask for, you didn't ask for a hard copy, I know.
That's the original, I mean, I, she got it.
He was seven, she was down to seven.
I thought, I thought we were going to try it.
Yeah, I know. If you want a hard copy, though, if anybody wants a hard copy of anything, just let me know, we'll get it.
I'm a good, the last thing we have.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson for his work on, uh, conduct of the meeting. Any comments or questions on this? We are, we are rolling on the second reading of the, uh, conduct of the meeting on tonight's. All good?
Just a question on that bylaw, so normally that the agenda comes in Friday packet, you're gonna send it separate, like?
I'm gonna send the entire thing, we're gonna send the entire thing on Thursdays now.
We typically get it separate though, with the Friday report.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought you were talking about the Friday.
They just happen to come usually at the same time.
You're talking about the report or the packet?
Well, the bylaw makes it two business days, so you're saying, like, it'll be, it'll be a separate Friday.
Yeah.
I didn't, do you need an addendum?
As a matter of fact, I had it up Thursday, but I didn't, you know, I'm not, you notice, I posted it, but I, I just dropped the email, I'm not gonna have an email on Thursday yet. So we will definitely have that done, but you're, like we said, you'll probably see more addendums than normal.
Since the, I was gonna say, since the meeting's on, closer business Monday night, if you send it out Friday, it's almost as before seven P M.
Well, it's.
Yeah, but that's what we're trying to do. When is business done? I, I think you're, you're safe, I just, it seems like it's harder now than it was, so.
Well, the way I read it, I think I could still do it Friday morning, I mean, Friday morning, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I.
There's two business days, you still have the Monday of trial. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the best I can, but if something crazy happens, though, we, you know, they have the possible post, we'll, we'll start posting stuff in there. So if anybody, if anybody wants to see it, we start posting stuff in there before the agenda comes out, all the attachments that are related, you wanna see it.
I don't know, I, uh, having, having access to the agenda and the share, I find that, that's good, I'll try to use it, that's what I'm hoping.
Good, good. Now, I didn't grant Mike access, because it wasn't in the bylaw, and I, I don't mind. The, the, the bylaw says that in consultation.
I have that, I have it in the U of M, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the, uh, the draft.
Well, I'm under the impression actually it's gonna be.
I don't mind the one, it's just that the bylaws of the president, I don't even present, but I can easily just put you in there.
Should we change the bylaw before we go now? I mean, the board sort of made an unofficial thing back when I was Vice President, it's been seventy years, where it's the president and the Vice President together. I'd rather memorialize it, I did not realize we had.
So I, I think that the, and, and the intention of this comment, this is how it reads right now. Superintendent, in consultation with the Ford President, shall prepare an agenda by business to come before the board at each meeting. You didn't answer, that's the sentence that you were talking about, and I think if the President says, hey, let the Vice President see it, I don't think that means to be put into the.
The President, like whoever's sitting, they're sitting here, so.
That's, well, that's how we're doing it the rest of the time, I just didn't realize it didn't happen.
Yeah, no, I actually, that's mine, that's mine, it's on the shelf.
All right, no problem, I might, all, all we did was actually, excuse me, Google it, you can look at it whenever you want, look at the next one.
Yep, that's all. Maybe they won't like the entire person, it's gonna be.
Who says we like this?
Nope. No, they're obsessed.
Okay, everyone's good? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capella?
Yes.
Moving on to operations, uh, Mr. Cass, did you just hear the transportation of buildings and grounds?
Yes. Nothing for transportation, under building and grounds, we have, uh, I have four items to, to move. Number one is to award a little corporation the most responsible bill, bidder to do, uh, demolition, the special removal of incinerators at our pre-district schools in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And number two is to go to the North County Superintendent of Schools for approval of new use of educational space, change of use of educational space, and or renewal of temporary structural space for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, as noted below. River View school, change of use, library, regular classrooms. Uh, number three, is asking for approval of E I associates in the amount of ten thousand dollars for feasibility study on.
feasibility study on solutions for our space issues district-wide. Number four, submission to the Morris County Superintendent of Schools for new use of educational space, change of use of educational space, and or renewal of temporary instructional space for the next school year, River View School, change of use of computer room to regular classroom.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve, just so I understand, so we apply for, do we apply, how do they designate a certain space as a certain educational use?
Whatever we have now, like if you want to take, if you want to take space right now, whatever we're using before, and change it to something else, you just have to ask for an application, you don't even have to do it. Like number four, we're doing that because we made it, but we have to have, this is step one, if you don't have this done, we can't do any of the other stuff until, until we decide. We're, we're hoping, we're thinking about helping out River View again with some space issues with the library and this one other thing, in the, in the computer room in River View, it's a double sided classroom. So what we're planning on doing, possibly, again, I haven't finalized whether we're not going to do it, but we just need this resolution to get started on considering it, would be to create another small group instructional inside, inside the technology with, with the walls like a value. So it's, it's a fairly inexpensive solution. I'll give you an example, like if we wanted to do it the regular way, like actually reconfigure the room with regular walls, our, our engineer said it would cost about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This way, it should cost somewhere in the thirty thousand, and we'll pick up an extra room, because even with the library fixes, we're still pretty much one move short of it. That will make do by using another basically substandard space, this would help them, you know, solve the problem. So if we can do it, we're going to do it, but we just need this to be started.
But there's like a list somewhere with the county that says, here's all the rooms at River View and what they're designated for their use.
Well, not like just a regular classroom, but if you've already, if you've already done something, like the River View library has already has a dual use thing, so now we're changing the dual use, you see what I mean? So it's, this is extending the dual use for next year, so.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's a formal, what happens is it triggers, it triggers the county to come out and make sure you're not using like a closet or something like that or something totally unacceptable.
Apparently they'll give a closet.
I guess for some reason or another.
Their standards are very flexible.
Yeah, yeah.
So for instance, at the Valley View Media Center now, that's a temporary space, so they're not carving walls.
I don't think that's temporary, but we had to get the dual use, right?
Dual use.
Because that's considered one room, even though that, that computer room that we created is not considered, that's probably not, it's not on drawing, so if you were to.
Doesn't have its own egress entrance.
Probably never drew that on a plan, so.
Well, we all, yeah, we all, that's a whole other ball case, but I said, yeah, so, no, that one, that one will be, like every year we have to do, we have to do like the River View one, which are using such, you know, a wall, fake wall. But once, once you do it, I'm under the impression that you've done it, right, like Valley.
Do you have to request a change?
But we do have to, even for Valley. They don't come out and look at everything if it's just the same one you did.
Yeah.
They're doing something else, they actually do come out, every time, right? Every time.
Who comes out?
County B A.
Something to do.
They actually are pretty helpful too, she'll give us like other suggestions, she goes around, she's in charge of three counties, so she has three, do you think, three?
She has.
Just two, just June and March, and so she's seen other things, so I know objections offered to pretty, I don't know, interesting.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Can I ask a question regarding the feasibility study?
Yes.
In the letter that you gave us from E I, it talks about there to investigate two different options, first option will be to add five classroom sized spaces, second option will be to add eight classroom sized spaces. For the first option, they'll explore this solution at both River View and Lakeview, I assume it's in two schools. For the eight classroom, for the second option, it'll only be River View and Inter School, what's the, I assume you did the Y five and eight, what are we getting for eight, we're not getting for five?
Well, one is the larger addition we talked about a few times, the other one is the small one that we could get by, it may not be five, maybe, could be like three large, two small, and then again, so in the end, it's about the size of five classrooms and four classrooms and all that. This is all.
No, I know we talked about a small versus a large, but.
I guess what she's asking is more.
Do we think we need five classrooms and eight gives us extra, extra room for growth? Do we think we?
Well, eight, if we did the eight, then it would be at River View only, we'd be able to move an entire program, and also include the office for, for the special services department, which we don't currently have.
If we go with five at either school, we don't get them in an office?
If we do, if we do, if we do five even at River View, we would free up space for them to go over to Lakeview, or, or keep them here, depending on which classes you move. One of the things is if you have most of your specialized programs at Lakeview, I would want to put the director of Lake, because if, if we move all specialized programs from Lake to River View, then, then we could, you know, obviously hopefully find a space for.
So why isn't the eight classroom being, being considered for Lakeview?
Just did I, did I not do well, tried not to well, Lakeview would be larger.
But we're willing to go five.
Well, five would just cover what we have now. If you had the other ones, then you wouldn't be making some room for growth. Over here, at River View, we'd make some room for growth over here. So as you guys, I mean, I know I've spoken about this for a while, the, the small additions to cover what we don't have now, the larger one would be to have some room for growth.
I, I think you heard you're wrong, Steve. If we made Lakeview any bigger, if you put an eight classroom addition over there, you're going to get to a point where literally the people who live across the street from River View are going to have to go to Lakeview. I mean, we're going to get to the point that line is going to get to forty-six, I mean, we're getting already.
Well, I, I'm not interested in making Lakeview that big, and I understand it's the easier one to build then, I understand that, which is why we're investigating both. I just wanted clarification on what, I know we were talking about a small or a larger addition, but.
I think correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but no matter why, if we can do an addition at River View, that's the first option, even if it's five or eight, right? I mean, even five, if we can figure out a way to do it that makes sense, wouldn't we prefer?
It doesn't cost three times as much as we pay.
The only, the only reason, but you.
Makes sense.
Yes, yes. The only thing I'd like to piggyback on that for is, is clarify what you mean by making sense. In my eyes, making sense means not to drive up our, our staff costs because now we're splitting our people. See, the idea of having a large enough addition, you can move everything over there, and then you don't really have to worry about it, but when you split them, sometimes your staff costs will end up eating into some of these savings you're going to have if you aren't able to, you know, create the space and not have to set it out.
You're talking about specific programs that are at Lakeview.
What is everything that we have?
Say again?
Oh. Let's suppose this does, so they're ready to move everyone into town hall tomorrow, where are they going?
Right now, the plan is for special services.
True.
First of all, it's, it's not going to happen right now, but.
Hypothetically.
All right, so hypothetically, well, we, well, right now I couldn't do it, how's that, is the answer, but I could do it, I could do it in August, so.
Yeah, well, discussions on this, and there was nothing about this plan and that solution, and we had a solution without this plan.
So in August, once, you know, the school year's over, and we do the work we have to do to River View's library, which is going to free up small spaces, which will free up the, the trailers, we're going to put the special services department temporarily in the trailers until we decide what this permit decision's going to be, construction of some type. That's the temporary solution.
I mean, we made that decision before.
The decision to do that, like I just said, yes.
I don't know, I mean, I just, I know we went through this with other studies, and when they rounded three zeros, it doesn't sit right, like I, the fixed price versus the hourly.
I know.
I don't know if we did, like the need base, you know, I apologize for missing the third meeting, and I, I saw what was put together, but as far as the, the need, like I like the homegrown solution where, you know, even with declining enrollment, if we can have twenty of this size class or this, like to organically grow, this is what we need to serve our district right now. Like, I don't know, you have time to do that, we have plans.
You mean without?
I'm looking at Sandy from an educational, I hear that we can't, you know, people are eating lunch at ten o'clock or whatever, you know, like educationally, the size is what's not working, and, and if it's done with some intelligence, then it's, it's, it makes sense to do this, it just, I, I hate when it is around, like this fixed price stuff, you know, I want to, when we enter into this, like I just want to be sure we know what we need versus what we want. What do we need?
This, to me, this is solving our, it's not really about reducing class sizes, it's really about getting our kids out of trailers and adding the other substandard spaces, that's really the only purpose out of my eyes.
It's not going to solve eating breakfast, eating lunch, excuse me, that's any.
It won't do any type of, there's not enough.
That's large spaces.
No, I, I understand, I guess what I'm saying is we have a solution in mind, I guess in status quo, that this wasn't dependent on us moving the staff and putting a lot of the rest of the space.
No, you're right, I mean, that's going to happen no matter what we do, it's just that, it's another temporary solution, we won't, we won't.
And we're not displacing anyone any further, it's just that we, we have a lot of substandard spaces.
We're trying to address it, get the kids out of the trailers.
And, and first of all, so do I, I support it, it's not like you talked about it at the last meeting, the fact that it includes, if it just included one option, I was not in favor of, the fact that it's going to look at multiple options is something that I, I, I think is good. The one thing I will mention as a concern is that this space that we're creating does not take into account two hundred and sixty-three units that are on the town's plan to be built by twenty twenty-five. So, and we don't know specifically how many students will come out of that, that two hundred and sixty-three units that are planned to be built on the town's plan. So it's a concern that I certainly have, that if we decide to go down this road, and I think we need to open up that dialogue to get a little better of a timeline with the town as to when the projects are going to happen, if they're going to happen by twenty twenty-five, because my concern is we go down the road and we say, great, we're going to solve the problem we have now, and we get the support, we go to referendum, we do a ten million dollar referendum theoretically, and then we build this, we, we build an addition, and then eight years from now, we go, oh darn, we now need to build a thirty million dollar school, because we have a lot more influx of kids that come into the district, because in addition to those two hundred and sixty-three units, the town has made public that the courts may push them to even a higher number than that. So it's certainly a long-term concern I have, I know Steve and Dino and I spoke about it earlier today, just about how we kind of, you know, things, our thoughts on it, we are going to try to open up some dialogue with the town as to kind of their, their process and their timing, because it's a long-term concern of mine for sure. But I still think, with all that being said, I think this is the right thing to do now, we can't, we don't know that problem, so we can't create a solution to a problem we don't know. We know a problem Steve had presented to us, this is a, a road or data to give us a solution or some ideas to solutions for the problem that Steve has presented to us.
I don't know if this is the right time, but since you brought it up, I wholeheartedly support us opening up a dialogue, I think we need to, and you're right, we, right now we have to solve a problem that we don't have, but I think we should be mindful of, it's not that far down the road when it talks about how long it takes to plan something. And I read through all those documents that were sent to us, and they're not easy to understand.
You mean the town document?
The town, yeah, pilot, I mean, should we talk about that at the end? No, I'm kind of sure.
We have all the agendas.
All right, but yes, I think we definitely need to open up more dialogue. And I'll leave the rest of my comments till the end when we're talking about.
I got a question about the E I letter. In the letter, they say the last, the four of the options is the paved area and back of the school.
That's the subject.
Okay, that's the area where that little basketball hoop is, okay, so I want to make sure that's what we were talking about, they weren't talking about like the paved area between the playground and the school.
He said you have to build on college, it's actually.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you couldn't build it up unless you wanted to have to wash it out every three or four years.
He's going to look at a two-story addition, actually, over the college back there.
Yeah, that, that's, that might be, that might get us the room.
Steve, just for clarification, so where is the ten thousand dollars coming from?
We have.
We have some breakage, I think the project, uh, budget is, 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 uh, we are able to lose, um, different, different months. Is it the final place for the project?
We have, like, for example, we have fifty thousand dollars in budget to, to rehab the trailer if we need it, we're not going to need fifty thousand dollars, probably going to be more like ten thousand dollars, like overseas, but we have a lot of that money, that's just one example.
Did they give you an estimated time for three months?
Said they would start right away.
Yeah, because he can't, he didn't say.
He didn't say they come along on Friday.
Oh, wait, yeah, he did say. Is the first bank is available to execute the project prompt or on receiving the resolution?
He says it would be presented to the board in May, he says, we anticipate completion of the feasibility study, study, in time to present to the board in May, allow the treaty begin the plan.
Okay. Have the meeting of the minds occurred where you, this proposal for five classroom to the classroom, would that improve your mind, like the, the scheduling of the current?
What that will, I think which school it's at, but what it will, what it will solve, if it's at River View, what it will solve is that we will not have more than one other music classrooms in the lunchroom, which means that we can actually offer more music throughout the day, because we don't have to be set to just first three periods of the day, and last two periods of the day. We've already made up this schedule, and right now, if we're able to, if we're able to free up that space, right now, we're moving, just even this year, we're using it in one classroom, that allows us to move some of our staff more periods of the day over to Lakeview, to solve that issue with coverage and all that, so that's a big one. As far as the smaller space, that's where the substandard is, so Steve and I have gone over and over again, how many we actually need, and just this week, I said, go back and count all the classrooms again, and let's just really make sure of how many large rooms do we have, and to make sure we're getting our numbers right, so I, I do think that it's a solution that we have right now.
So that's, I guess, if you check them twice, because when you bring in the architects, they're not going to redo without a charter anymore. You know, they're not, this is a one-shot fix, we know what we want, you know, I don't think it's too late, right, the second, because the heavens forbid, but that's, you know, that's. You know, I don't think it's too late, right, the second, it's the heavens forbid it anymore, but that's, you know, that's.
And ju- just to clarify, so I know there were some space issues at Lakeview. So, are you saying that theoretically, if the addition was done at River View, we could move some kids in that direction? How, how do we solve the Lakeview space issues with an additional River View?
Well, part of the issue, there's several issues. One is where we're putting the prepaid. Where are we putting the prepaid? Prepaid is gonna be at Lakeview, then we have to deal with the space. They're going over to River View, they'll be over to River View, and all those supports, they don't make them. I think that's really the question. But with that, the related armed services have to also cover the prepaid. So, we're trying to share staff to, without, we don't wanna hire any additional staff if we can do it. So, we're trying to schedule between the buildings, okay. Can you make it work? And then the whole of our thing is like, we don't have a music room, so we can't do music fourth, fifth, and sixth, so I can't give you a music teacher anytime, because I need those periods during the day. So, allowing, getting the music teacher in a room allows her to teach music at River View a full day, four days a week, it gives her a full day to be able to assist with the issues at Lakeview. It's, it's really, it'd be really hard to be able to cover. It could become a river, River View if prepaid's over at River View. And that's where it comes in, because we now have these four classrooms, also we have our special coverage for teachers. That'd mean like fifteen more periods of coverage that you would, you would anticipate.
So, along those lines, I would assume that Steve and Sandy, you guys are in conversations with the architects as they're going along. So, what I don't want is to, for, to find out that we got a proposal in front of us that you guys go, well, this is really a proposal, but it doesn't solve the problem we're looking to solve. So, along the way, you might have to look at something, the architect might say, I got this great idea, this is what I think would work, and then you guys go, well, it just won't work for Charlie Dabid. I assume that's.
Yeah, we meet with him.
Back and forth, and then before they go and spend a bunch of time and effort to draw something up, you might say, that idea doesn't work, right?
Yep. I mean, I never really considered a small addition at River View as an option, just because of what we're saying about moving the people around. I mean, on case value, it makes sense to build at River View, but all along, my discussion was really building the small addition at Lakeview to house their people, or the large addition at River View and move all those people over. Doing it at River View just creates other problems. I'm not sure, and not only that, but also, if you do it at River View, and I remember I was telling you before, if we used a bath, for example, then we still would have to rehab some bathrooms, which probably would just be prepaid in the back. So, we're trying to do it all at once smoothly. If we did it at, if we did it at, um, Lakeview, for example, if we built it at Lakeview, we would build it and solve the bathroom problem. I wouldn't wanna do it and still have a bathroom problem. So, in one shot, we can fix both. The problem, obviously, the downside is you're making the big school bigger, but not with more kids, just bigger states. But that's why we need them to tell us, because I'm, I'm, you know, this is not my area of expertise. If, if he can somehow explain to us that doing it at River View will be cost-effective, and then we can work out whether or not we can do it academically, then maybe that's the solution.
Yeah, we're gonna work along with that. That's the key, yeah, that's the key to me, is make it work.
I mean, yeah.
They call it a great idea that we go, that looks, that looks beautiful, but it solves those problems.
Yeah, he won't, he won't do that. It'll, it'll be.
And, and how long goes on, 'cause you brought up the prepaid. I know that we have a prepaid program where people pay to go to half-day prepaid. Is that just filling, are we creating new routes for that?
No, we have, because.
By law.
We have to, um, have kids that work our, like, peers. Well, it's, it's, absolutely, absolutely change, yeah. So, we can do it for free or recharge, recharge it nonchalantly, it doesn't, however, cost it. It does change some of the costs. So, it's not from the actual, some of the, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we can't open up space, but say, it's not, yeah.
So, I think about the resource with the, this meeting with you and Harrah. Even though the demographic study shows that we have slightly decreased in the student population, the principal population is everywhere. Would it be classroom, now, assuming five classroom plan, do not offer expansion for the room, would it be classroom plan?
Yes. That was the plan, have room for expansion. Not a lot of expansion, but some expansion. The, the other one, most likely, and I'm gonna say definitely, because we probably would make the, the new classrooms multi-use, meaning they could be small or large. Maybe if you had a small prepaid, four kids or something, maybe you could use it. You know, like a half room. Because each of those rooms, and this is not dumb, this is just an idea. Rather than building, like, four large classrooms, I, I was speaking with the, with the previous architect about making four large classrooms, each with a bathroom, but also with the wiring, can make it eight little classrooms. So, the answer is, if it was a large prepaid, we'd probably wouldn't have room. If it was a small one, maybe we would, like, four kids or something, and that's possible. If we had, if you have twelve in one, and that's the max, or we have sixteen kids, maybe you make one ten, one six, or something like that, and it works.
Just for starters, we're at a mass space now, do you think?
Pretty much, yeah. We don't, and depending on the classification, we don't have, we don't have room for another kid. Or we have room for one more, I think. But I think we might have two being considered, so we're gonna be, it's gonna be tight. And the, remember, the problem, not, not that it's a problem, it's just something new and something unforeseen, is that we get them from early intervention, and it kinda, whenever they hit the age, that's when we find out about. So, you have to figure out what we're gonna do when they hit the age. That's how, that's how.
There's no articulation? Do you mean you had something to articulate?
To a degree, yes, but not, not.
If they have a two-and-a-half-year-old, they know when they're gonna turn three.
Yeah, I know. The problem is, a lot of times, those kids aren't, you know, they may not be in the program or something. So, we're, we do have, we do have a, a relationship with them, we just don't always know that in a way, if they're out of lunch. That's what happens.
And I can, I can personally speak, because it's relevant to, or voting on, just, so, get off topic, but, um, I personally experienced the substandard space. I had a parent-teacher conference for my child in a room that had a wall that was up. And I can tell you, it's uncomfortable to have a parent-teacher conference when there's another parent-teacher conference going on in the same room, but it's not full wall. Um, it wasn't a, it was, it was kinda just as we crossed paths, but then there was a teacher in the other part of the room. I can imagine for students, it's very distracting when you have two classes going on with, which is not a real wall. I mean, there's a space on the top, there's a space on the side.
And you have to walk through the one room to get to the other.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah, to walk through. I mean, you know, we, we have parent-teacher conferences with another teacher on the other side of the wall, because she was preparing for another conference, so it's just, I, I can imagine for the students, especially the students that are there, because they need small space instruction, I would imagine it's very, um, they can be distracting for the service team, so.
Okay.
Anyone else on the small? Well, hopeless.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Yes. Excuse me. Uh, Mrs. DeLuna, would you care to take us through our finance items today?
Sure, but there's no objection. I like to move items, uh, one through six as a block under finance. Um, with one friendly change to number one, um, it's about check numbers. The first line should read nine-nine-zero-zero-three-seven. With the current expectations. So.
First zero.
Instead of nine-zero-zero, it's nine-nine-zero.
Thank you.
Uh, the six items include, uh, the acceptance of safety grant. Uh, rescinding the resolution of the application for the PSMG grant, summer enrichment fees, and renewal of membership of the pool insurance program.
Mr. Cass?
Mr. Cass?
Is that, is that you? We both.
You did it.
I need one.
Why don't we give it to Mr. Lur?
Yeah, he has a question.
Somebody play the pool insurance program.
It's only for swimming.
I would say it's, uh, probably, is the general liability chance for the district would be a little, uh, um, for not for the one of the staff, or the staff of the different company? Um, because it was, but this is just a little, or, every one of the chances that we have in this case.
No pool.
Thanks.
The double next, also.
All right, everybody good? Well, hopeless.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. DeLuna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I vote, uh, I don't even know how to do this. Um, on motion one, I need to abstain on check number two, four, seven, eight. On motion three, I vote no. And on all the rest, I vote yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Cadell?
Uh, yes. Okay, on to the other calls.
I have mine.
Got it, Mr. Cass?
Um, I see sheet of love you on my email to Senator Bucow and Assemblyman Carroll and Assemblyman Bucow, on his, uh, his pending bills on the OPIA and the policy for school districts. Whether you're for or against, you know, the application of mark on, the people that OD, um, based on what I hear, this, here's gonna be another one funded and, uh, you're, you're talking about training of certain people to administer the mark on. Uh, you're talking about purchasing it, you gotta have inventory, check for expiration dates, and, uh, get rid of when it expires. Uh, and this is one of the things that comes out of track that, that costs money. How much, uh, I don't know, but, um, so I, I wrote them to express, you know, my concern about that. And, uh, I didn't think about how much it would cost, I just, I just, basically, obviously, an urban district with a big school population and a lot of staff, um, you'd have to have more mark hand, on hand than you would have in a small rural school. And it would be for, uh, use, my students' health, of course.
Oh, that's, I got two, I got a few, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, myself, as well as, uh, Dino, Laura, and Dave, as we leave graduation at River View, um, this past, or, I guess, last Friday. Um, it was extremely well put together. It's always a, a great ceremony. Appreciate the partnership with the township, with the, uh, police department. Officer Andrew, with us, obviously, a positive job with the, with the kids, and forms a great relationship, um, and partnership with them. So, uh, and, and always impressive to hear the, uh, the, the children present and, uh, hear their essays that they write about the program. So, uh, thank you to the administration for supporting that program and inviting us to.
The way you want us to say it, once it is, it'll be a hundred forty.
So, well, that was, uh, thank you.
Thank you for the song.
The, the, uh, the music teacher at all students really showed some, uh, uh, the music cut out after the song, and without the beat, it continued, and it was really impressive. And the whole, the whole event's always impressive. I've just got a couple of things. I had heard, actually, through the town green committee that Value is having a green fair, I don't know. Lily Styles, I believe, which sounds good? Okay.
It's in my report.
Uh, yeah, I think I have one minute.
Eleven AM to two PM.
So, we're, we're gonna obviously publicize that.
It's starting, it's starting.
And they add.
We also started pushing the, the Friday fold.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll work.
Trying to drive that up to. The, uh, there was some interesting news out of Trent about the light testing. Apparently, uh, there is a bill that's been passed by both sides of the legislature and the governors and the courts, I don't think it's been signed, but that would give us reimbursement for testing for light water retroactive to the beginning of last year. So, passing that just late, so I'm imagining it's hopefully gonna be good off. Personal note, I will not be here until, uh, I'll be a passover, so you guys will have to carry on without me. And I think the last thing was Laura and I got to attend the county meeting. Uh, we had two, I thought, pretty interesting presentations. One is on the pilot program, we'll throw down our discussion, and, uh, we had a presentation about kind of the pros and cons, and where school districts stand in the, uh, in the pilot process. Uh, also, I was, I was watching a presentation about democratic analysis and how people point it, and some of the pitfalls, and some of the things to look for. And, um, the school districts are talking about redevelopment, which, obviously, something we're talking about in short order, so I thought they were both really helpful presentations.
I, um, I did also wanna, and Steve mentioned it in his report, but I just wanted to thank Steve and all the sports recreation organizations that got together twice in the last few ones to discuss, uh, the field at both Lakeview and River View, I'm sorry, Lakeview and Value. Um, I think that there's a lot of interest in, from a lot of folks here to call sports in the town, as well as, uh, the, at the district here, to do something about our sporting facilities and fields. And, uh, I appreciate Steve taking the initiative to bring those folks together to discuss it, and, uh, it seems like there's a lot of interest. So, uh, hopefully, we'll see some, some small progress initially, and then hopefully, long-term, even some, uh, some longer-term plans that we partner together with the town and other organizations to, uh, potentially, uh, get our fields re-verb back to the condition that we would expect from dental and, uh, now.
Oh, one other thing, I was actually, uh, sat in on the district's technical meeting that we talked about at River View, and one of the things that Steve mentioned in his report is that our website's in life, so they're looking at, um, possibly replacements. One of the things they're doing is they put together a big list of samples of templates that they're having, uh, the staff, uh, basically doing a survey, kind of pick ones that they think would be good for dental, and it's a little interesting. So, there's an online survey, which I forwarded you all tonight. You can log in as a password, it will give you, you know, the design, or the structure, and they like that.
That's how we got the one we have now?
Steve, does that affect our app?
Oh, yeah, it will. It will, because the website's totally, you know, it's gonna have to download.
But isn't it, but isn't it, isn't, or is the, the website the one that they're thinking about? Is it tied with the app maker or with the school messenger? The one that's.
It's tied with the school messenger, and I think, don't quote me, but I think our, our app is the school messenger.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
It's not gonna look exactly the same, because it's formatted the website. All links will change, I guess.
Right, but the.
They wouldn't have to download the new app.
I don't think so, maybe I'll do it.
Yeah, I think, and, and.
The other one, that's one of the pros for that, you connect the school messenger app, and it'll be, uh. Yeah, we can, we can. We heard the feds are coming twice.
And we'll move on to the discussion items, anyone?
Well, I guess I have one more. I attended Lakeview's PTA meeting. I attended Lakeview's PTA meeting, it was been last year, but it's still there. Where they talked about a lot of great things going on. I guess the only thing I'd make a pitch for, if anyone hasn't or has some interest in their tricky trade is Friday, April 7th. It's always an amazing time. From what I heard about it, it's going to be an amazing time. There are lots of amazing tricky trades, so.
Is that a start? Is that a...
No, just don't ask me the tricky questions.
Yes.
I believe it is, yes. April 7th, that much I know for sure.
All right, should we move on? Garden State Coalition of Schools?
The Garden State Coalition of Schools is an organization that represents mainly suburban districts, but districts like ours that don't feel like we get represented as well as we think we do in the legislature and also in our funding. It's a, it's got, it's a large population of districts. I used to be on the board of it when I was in Corona. When I came here in that boat, we never really talked about it again. The only reason I bring it up tonight is, there's two reasons. One, the board has brought up several things that the Garden State Coalition helps a lot in for and has made some, gotten some traction in the past. And also, the president of the organization reached out to me to see if dental was interested. It's, uh, it is a financial commitment. The fee is around $2,500. They did say that if we joined, if we wanted to join for the ring through this year, it was $625. It's really, I think, something that the board would have to consider, talk about, think about, whether or not you want to be involved in an organization that basically lobbies for things that you basically talk about all the time, about why we're not getting the right funding. You know, even the building, I mean, these are all issues that all these districts like us are dealing with. And the president is, is now, it's actually the director, is a former board president from Glen Ridge School District, named Betsy. And she reached out to me personally about it, just to see if we're interested. First time she reached out to me, just this year, even though it's been a few years since I've been down. It definitely does a lot of good things. And they're, she even said to please realize that when things come up, they actually call her, they call the Garden State Coalition rather than she having to call them. So when the legislature or an organization is doing something, walk through the last to see what is the Garden State Coalition's take on this. So I talked to Dino about it a few times, and I thought, put on the agenda to see, see what you guys think, whether or not it's something that they want to explore.
They'd be also a good little organization that they would support candidates that are more aligned with our district needs and our issues with the current process.
I've never seen them support a candidate. I really haven't seen them do that, go out and support a candidate. But I have, they do lobby for like issues. They take a stand on issues more than the candidates.
Like what I just talked about.
Yeah.
I don't know about the, you know, that's my opinion, I know what their position would be on some.
Well, their position on all unfunded mandates is you have to...
I don't think we get the representation or the pressure on it, that the representative's downshift. It's very oriented towards the area of districts, not to say that the area of case is not important, but you see the way this money flows, and we get to our state to the same, what, the last three years? Right?
Top of seventy.
You know, money change, yes. And I think for the rest of those years, $25, the money will spend. I don't have a problem with the money. You got, you know, somebody lobbying on it began with the suburban districts. It's been a, just a big issue recently, so I've been on the board, the way the legislation that comes out as well as the funding for districts like ours.
Well, everything you said is basically what they do. That's the, that's the reason why they exist, is to fight for districts like ours. For, you know, for funding, for whatever, the unfunded mandates. They take a stand on things. When I, when I used to sit on the board and I went to it, you know, the districts over there were Ridgewood, Freehold Regional, places like that, Summit, Chatham, Livingston, Glen Ridge.
Well, but again, if you get more districts signed up, they've got a whole, they get membership costs, you know, they have more districts that participate. I think it's a, it's a good idea that it be more visible at the state house.
I guess my question would be, is, I mean, in a way, I think we already belong to an advocacy group, right? You know, in Jersey School. And I guess my question is, how, how similar or non-similarization in terms of what you do? I don't know the answer, I'm just talking.
I think the big difference is gonna be that school boards represent everyone. If Garden State Coalition, Coalition really represents districts like ours. So sometimes, school boards, they wouldn't take a stand on something that may help us but hurt another one of the members. Whereas this group is really, you know, it's very similar to our district, like similar type of districts throughout the state. They do have some little more urban districts, but primarily, they're all suburban districts that form this allegiance and have been trying to fight for adequate funding against unfunded mandates.
So, let me ask you this, and just kind of look at this. All GS, DS member districts are welcome to the meeting in half voice, and only trustee districts may vote. District representatives usually include superintendent of schools that are interested in how the education may be non-sufficient. So I guess my question is, I mean, I have a pretty good feel for how school boards, you know, the assembly, how the kind of advocacy generates its general role in time. I guess my question is, how, how do these positions generate? How do we have focus?
How do you get on board of this?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, as a district we join, how, how, how are our decisions manifesting?
It wouldn't happen in a minute, because there's a lot of districts that tell us somewhere. Sixty or something, seventy. Maybe, I might as well go on that. So it rotates through. You probably wouldn't get a seat on it right away, but eventually, you could get a seat on the board to, you know, to make decisions for it as well. But you're all, well, the consensus are always welcome to come and... Meetings are held usually at East Brothers Report at Office. And there's normally one at Ford's Eight Country Club at the end of the year, where they have some of the legislatures, some of the legislative legislature there. And then you get the chance to talk to them, this is what they actually, they stand on.
So, so everybody's back on the crosshairs, and we just passed the first half. We do a little more research and continue the conversation.
You want me to put this back on for discussion number eight?
I just refill, refill, continue, continue the dialogue.
Sure. Fully down.
Just one more thing on that. Would this be a discussion in one of our committees, so we can get it on the agenda and either approve or not approve of the joint?
We could put it on.
I mean, rather than, you know, I don't know how much, we've had some discussions tonight, is maybe have a committee that go a little bit further, plus or minuses, and then make a recommendation whether to put it on the agenda or not.
You think finance?
Before the school year's over.
Finance committee?
Yeah.
All right, grade level schools. Yeah, grade level schools slash self-study strategy.
So, we've been speaking about this for a while, keep it on the agenda for a little while. One of the things we talked about was that we didn't use the strategic planning forum to even start the conversation of grade level schools. So one of the things we thought about was, to get this out to the public, if you, if the board thinks this is the way to go, we could advertise and make sure everybody knows, or put it something in the newspapers and have a discussion, and then open up the next meeting on the tent to the public who would like to come in and talk about grade level schools. The way you get public input and let people know that this is something that we're passing, tossing around. Dr. Collins has done a bunch of research, I've done research on whether or not it's adequately feasible. And we would talk about that stuff, that idea, and then have a public, again, give some ideas. These are things that we spoke about prior to the strategic planning meeting. And now, we're at the point where if we're, if we're gonna consider it, this is a possibility, we want to get it out and see what the public sees.
I'm all for advertising and putting it out there. I'm not for doing it at the meeting, we don't have a board president because it's high holiday. And therefore, we would also be including other people from attending the meeting who won't come out on the high holiday.
Sure. We would want to do it on the twenty-fourth, it's our board, it's our budget here. But we could move it to that.
So my, my only concern with, weigh on this, is tonight we voted on a $10,000 feasibility study. And if we decide to go down a road of grade level schools, do we just throw away the $10,000 feasibility study and have to go back and get another study? Or, I, there's so many moving parts going on right now, I'm just not sure. Every time we think we're heading in the right direction, we get, I mean, the next discussion item is something that could also affect the $10,000 thing we just voted on. So I feel like it's, at some point, we want to go ahead and move forward, but I understand there's also all these moving parts. And I don't know if we are, I mean, do any of these feasibility studies that we're looking at, do they fit into potentially doing grade level schools? Or do we look and go, wow, we really think grade level schools are the right thing, but we just decided to spend $10,000 on a project that doesn't make sense? I don't know where we stand on that.
Well, I think, I think that we can use the, if we decide, you're, I mean, that's, you're right, Mike. That's the reason why it's on the agenda for discussion tonight, to do on the April 10th. It's the whole reason. So then we could have, like, in other words, if two hundred people came in here and said, don't even consider grade level schools, and we all decided, if the board said, you know what? We're not gonna do grade level schools, well, then we tell them, don't worry about grade level schools. But you're right, so right now, we'd be going forward with something, and then we would have to probably ask for a third version of whether or not this works as a grade level school. But yeah, it would definitely slow the process down.
And that was a recent line, I was, I was arguing with you guys, so I, I really wish I could be there. I'm just, but from a timeless point of view, I am, I have seen this situation.
So you're saying if you do it on the tent, you think you have the ability to, in, 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 whichever direction we seem like we're heading towards or that is interested in, we can direct the architect's feasibility study in that direction?
But I think a lot is on our side, like, saying, hey, you know what? This is what we need, because we want to, we're gonna do grade level schools. Grade level schools totally out, don't worry about grade level schools. That's what I, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, guys. I mean, this is, this is definitely not an easy solution to any of this.
Right, I agree a hundred percent with what Mike said. And I'm not about spending the money, although we already voted for it, so, there's no... The architect's not gonna tell us whether it's grade level schools or not. Architect, we're gonna tell them. And you guys have looked at this already. And when last you presented to us, we couldn't, the amount of classrooms get the grades evenly in to the schools. So if you get five classrooms at Burrview, can we now, how, I mean, you guys have already looked at this, you should be able to know the answer to it. Maybe not a lot of people are right.
It might differ.
We need more large space and nine smaller Burrview.
So not what we're asking them to do. So then I really feel like we put this before, I mean, I would rather wait till we have that meeting before the architect goes and then we spend the money once.
I can tell you, at this point, just my position, which the board will have to decide which direction they want to go. There's not a huge body of research on, there's a lot on configurations, but almost all of it is configuration for convenience, for fitting in, for staffing. Very little bodies of research, research for student achievement. However, this whole, since Steve asked me the last two weeks to really research, all the research that I could find on student achievement said not to go in grade level schools. The larger number of grades you can have in a school, the fewer transitions was better for student achievement. So the board would have to decide if you still were interested in pursuing grade level. I don't, I don't have any evidence to show that academically, it would be...
So you've done a lot more research recently than when you first presented it to us, September?
The last...
Or, I don't remember.
Because there's a lot of research that shows it's great for staffing, great for PDA, great for that. But what I learned in all of student achievement is there are evidence for it improving for kids, improving for kids. And I think that you found the same thing.
So there's no research, period? Or there's research to the contrary?
It certainly isn't a large body of evidence. But all of it, there is none of it that says it is better. All of it says it is better to have as many grade levels as you can in a building and the fewer transitions possible.
So, I mean, I just see, so, I think the reason why the board went down this road is when we sat down and we first were presented with the substandard space, one of the options was grade level schooling, and we sat in on committee meetings and we said, what do you guys think about grade level schooling? And it seemed like there was a lot more enthusiasm for it. Yes, if I were to build a district, which I assume is from scratch, which assumes, you know, nothing here right now, you would build it that way. If you're telling us now, based on the research that you've done more extensively, that that's not the position, then I, I don't, I'm one of seven. I don't see any reason to present anything to the public where we have no evidence, no belief that it is better for the students, and would be very disruptive to the district also. So I, I'm one of seven saying here, so I see no reason to present it to the public if, unless the public's coming to us screaming, knock on their door, which I don't see them knocking on the door, that they've launched grade level school.
Which is why I wanted to present that tonight, but if you even want to go down that road, you know, bringing all of it in, because I just don't have any evidence to say that it's going to be improving for students. It will improve PDA. I still would love to have these schools at the same time, that would be really great. But I don't have any evidence that it would actually improve that.
Well, I was wondering, other than grade level school, you feel there's other ways to address it? It's not as if we can do it, crack the existing condition. Besides opening, setting up, maybe, maybe opt for...
And I'm not sure it's worth, whatever we would gain would be disruptive.
Well, we're all spoken about efficiency, grade level schools could lead to better efficiency. In terms of class sizes among the regular grade. That doesn't mean that it might increase some other areas, meaning like now we may be, we may be like, split our people separately and just force each in one, but it could lead to some more efficiency.
Mike, you're talking about long, complicated, expensive road, it's a possibility. So you guys, so, so at the end of the day, you don't feel comfortable recommending grade level schools?
No, and if you quantify what I said about the efficiency, right now, the numbers we have now, there would be no increased efficiency. We wouldn't be able to eliminate sections, just because we have, we have all full classes, unless the board wanted to amend that, the guidelines, making it up to twenty-seven, twenty-eight K, that wouldn't really be beneficial. So at this particular time, we wouldn't see any, that's why I said, it may, it's a lot of maze. Because the numbers you have just all show.
If we find two grade levels in the next six years, then we could have seven sections at a week. And so we, I played it out, Burrview, I mean, definitely not eighty, we could save on related expenses in staffing.
Well, at this point, if you're one of seven, if there's no evidence of a better academic achievement, academic outcome, then I have no interest in continuing to go down that road unless there's another, somebody else, but I, I'm good with, like, the diamond line, so to say, or, like, move on.
I would try to see more. Okay, I asked Barbara, but we, this was mentioned before, but it's a big number, I think, at the East Green meeting. We got the hub times up here, okay? We got a court case going on with the panel developer. How it's gonna end, none of us know. But they're proposing, you know, five thousand market rate units over the next ten years. And in excess of one thousand affordable units.
Six thousand total.
So that's six thousand total. So I don't know the number of units, you know, family units we have, or what percentage are our personal populations, but I doubt, you know... But I doubt, you know, if we lose this, and these are the actual numbers, will be well in excess of the 2,210 students we had when, when I first joined the board. So, you know, you'll be back to where we were, you know, eight years ago, 10, like, 10 years ago, when we were talking about doing a middle school. I mean, whether you do a $10 million addition on these schools or it's a $2 million project, it's not, it's not going to be enough. And this, and this.
Don, just to, yeah, just to clarify, I totally agree, Don. I think, just to kind of put a cap on the grade level schooling, because that's the next subject. And I totally agree with it. But grade level schooling, I don't want to.
No, no, no.
Does anybody have any interest in continuing to move down the grade level schooling?
Don, Don.
I would be interested in seeing, getting an email with the links to the various, it's a research that you've been up with, Sandy.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm, until I've read through that and try to come across something that everybody else is missing, I don't see any reason to keep going forward.
Well, I agree, this is new information than what was presented to us the last time. But it pretty much was the opposite recommendation coming from two of you. Which, you know, I remember asking about extensively because I've served on a board with a different administration that already looked at this. So it wasn't my first time going down this path. So yeah, I mean, if the research is there to show that it doesn't improve academic achievement, then I don't see a reason.
That was included in the prior study. The districts that had grade level schools and those that were configured like we are, it was really, nothing there specifically that said it was a big, a big advantage. And I don't remember all the details of when that study was done, but one of the major issues was busing. Because we had families in town that had zip codes in, uh, Booton Township, ran off Morris Plains. So you're talking about, you know, somebody coming down Diamond Spring Road there from Farborough Road. Right on the borderline Rockaway Casket, going all the way, busing it, bussing all the way to Lakeview. It was a major logistical effort to bus these kids from one side of town to the other so they could attend a particular school. And that was a major issue when they studied that, uh, Capra Mosack, I heard her, who did a lot of that. Not that long ago, really.
No, it was not that long ago.
So you could pull that out and share, share it again, but it was just not, just not doable. I mean, you could do it if you wanted, but it would be very disruptive.
Well, you're right. The conversation that board had came down to, do you want a kindergartner on the bus for now? You know, if you're coming all the way from there and you put kindergarten all the way to Lake.
But he only gets that question if you understand that it's going to have an academic achievement improvement. If we don't have that, and that's step one, if we don't have that, then.
Right, and we didn't come to that conclusion the first time, that there was no academic.
Yeah.
I just, yes, you want, like, it's my name on it, but I don't have the evidence that would say that we were.
No, that's fine.
It seems like we should invest in more social.
Self-learning.
Social learning, because there was clearly some data that showed.
Yeah, it's based on those numbers.
So I don't, just to clarify, and I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but if we're saying that, so, just to make sure I'm summarizing this part. So right now, we don't see any efficiency gain, should we go to grade level school? Is that right?
So not, definitely not in the, in the configuration of 3, 4, 5, K, 2, at this particular time, probably.
And we don't see any academic improvement in that configuration.
But it's not, I, it's really, it's really.
Right, the evidence that we have says that the more years you can have in a school, the better and the fewer transitions.
So I just wanted to really highlight those two points of more difference.
So as of right now, we're not going to continue down this road. So we're not going to put on.
We're not going to have a, like, a muscle.
Right. We're going to have a breakable time.
So substandard space will still be on there. Another thing we talked about this morning, Eno and I, with Mike, we talked a little bit about substandard space and our concerns with the number with the last one, which was also related. And one of the things we talked about was getting an update of the demographers report to include all new development and possible proposed development. And I did reach out to Ross today, he said he'll give me a proposal. I'm updating it, he did say it would be, you know, much reduced compared to the cost of the first demographic study since most of the work was done. And he did say he would give me, he would break it down into most likely's and maybe. You know, like, in other words, there's some, there might be, there's some projects that we think might happen. He'll include those. And then there's projects that are pretty much moving along. He'll include those separately, so we can see the, the different categories.
So, I mean, just to tag off of that, the idea is that we'll sit down with the town. So, I mean, what I really would like to get is, you know, all of these possible projects, what is the likelihood number of students that's going to come out? So when we sit down with the town, we can say, look, guys, you know, these projects always kind of come along and they're pie in the sky and they're going to take your years off, whatever, whatever. And all of a sudden, we're reading about these. So we have, we have to bash it, sort of, uh, down, which of these projects are more likely. And then add our numbers and our volumes, so we can see where. So that was the basic idea behind us sitting down with the town and having, having, you know, here's, here's our, here's our stuff, here's our information, here's our data, you know, give us what you got. They're always a little reluctant to kind of, I think, telegraph some of these projects, but I think we really need to push it to the end of this session.
Absolutely.
And in their defense, they, you know, as, as Don mentioned, they're currently in a lawsuit. So this is, there's limited information they can give, but they've given us the 10-year plan, which was published in 2016, which was originated in 2015. So it's through 2025. So I think once we get an idea of how many students we project from out of each one of those developments, we will know as a district based upon the demography study and the projections on that, that 2025 plan, as of 2025, how many students we expect to have in Deadville. And with that, we will be able to determine, is what we're doing with EI and the feasibility study going to get us there? Going to give us room to have enough students? Or are we going to have to build a bigger addition or a new school? Or are we going to even less room? I don't know, you know? I mean, we just don't know until we have that data. So hopefully, once we have that data, we can sit down with the town. We've had some dialogue with them. They certainly seem to be willing to sit down with us and have the conversation. And I think it's, uh, I think it's very, very, very important for us to understand because, like I said, I am very fearful that we go down the road and we build a $2 or $10 million addition, whatever it is, and we find out that that's not good enough. So that's my, my biggest fears. But I also, I'm also a big believer in solving the problem we have in front of us. But if we understand what the problem is, meaning we get the numbers, then we at least have a better idea. So once again, I think Steve said it before, there's a lot of moving parts here. So hopefully, we can get that information. Would you anticipate, Steve, that we would have that information before PI does this project that we just ordered on? Or? I guess, once again, my fear is, yeah, my fear is, is we get the numbers, we sit down with the town, they say, yeah, by 2025, this is what we expect to get built. And now all of a sudden, we're going, oh, shoot. Once again, this project may need to go back to them and revise it. Like Mark said, revising projects turns into another $2,000.
Well, it all depends on how fast you want to get the approval to do Ross. If you want to wait to approve the updates, the demographic report until April 24th, that'd probably push it a little bit. Because by the time Ross starts his project, even if it takes him two weeks, and EI is getting ready to report to the board in May, most likely, though, it wouldn't happen. If you, if the board feels comfortable with that idea, normally, you know, a state, under $2,000, an under $2,000 purchase order is not necessarily has to go through the board, but these types of purchase orders I always have. So we wouldn't want to just all of a sudden do one without, you know, your input on that. But if the board feels comfortable with, with approval, we could even do an approval of a verbal, a verbal, uh, resolution to approve up to a certain amount to update the demographic report. Once I get to the thing, I'll give them the go-ahead.
So they would, he would update the demographic report, so in other words, get five years as of today. And he would also look at the, the plan from, the, the plan from the town. Add at each development, say how many students he projected, based upon what information he has. So let's understand that he doesn't have all the information. But he, whatever limited information he has, and he probably would be able to talk to the town and do a pick-up, phone, and call it out. Whatever information he has, he would also be able to give us that number, too.
He did say he would give us, like, different pools, like, this is a maybe, this is a, you know, a definite. You know, so he could say, there's maybe 300 units, and if you have these, you know, like, the ones that are floating out there and aren't like concrete yet, but we're still floating.
Want to arm on that reporting.
Yeah, like that. Like I said, let's find out those, too. Like, hey, how many possibly are? And he'll take a look at it, you know, you know, obviously, we don't know a timeframe of when it's going to be built. Say by 300 units with two bedrooms, this is a proxy we'll get over a portion of time. And then he would give us the ones that are much more, these, these ones that are probably going to happen. Now, I don't think any of them are definitely going to happen because you still have to have a building, right? That does, it gets polls and reports, but most likely it's going to happen. So I would like, and he said he had no problem with that, finding the maybes and the, and the most likely's. And then tell us until we get updates.
Can I ask a question? Do we have any way to find out? He did our report before Estland Lake did?
He did, he didn't include that, though.
It is, it is.
His number was what, 19? And so far, we have?
Eighteen.
And the town gave us the number of?
Four?
I thought it was less than.
I heard.
Because I sat in these meetings during that time.
There may have been a few numbers thrown around.
At one point, there was our presentation of non-practically.
Yes, there was non-practically none at the meetings I sat in. I just own, I understand when we're getting the numbers from the town, when we're getting the numbers from him. And I don't know if we can reach back, and it predates my time on the board, when the last big development went in off of a tent. The, you know, the two developments that went in off of a tent. They did an addition on Lakeview, which, like I said, predates all of us. And the day it opened, it was over full. That's all I heard of it was because the numbers were so wrong coming out of how many kids, how many students they were becoming out of those two developments. So, I mean, I don't understand where the numbers are. Like, his was high, but maybe not. I don't know if, as Lake is fully.
To necessarily, not necessarily.
Right. It's may not be full right then.
Well, it's full, but that's, that's what we know.
Yeah, I, the way that demographic file works is you have computers, right? Computers, you come and go, the people, the kids, so I can see it built.
And you have just my whole, you know.
Right, that one may, the other one was instantaneous, even though normally it might be predicted.
Well, so, so I, uh, the way that Ross Haber.
Pardon?
The way that Ross Haber figures out those numbers is based upon a Rutgers study. And you can read it because it's referenced in his last demography study. I, I did not read all 41 pages of it, but I did flip through some of it. And I will tell you, it's very specific. So it talks about the value of the unit, the amount of bedrooms, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's standard market rate, there's all of that that's taken into consideration. So the fact that if you look at the report from the town and it says, for instance, you know, how many units it's going to be, plus how many are going to be, how many going to be affordable housing units, he'll take that into account when he does it. I mean, yes, I mean, I think that part of it is, is, you know, nothing's perfect, right? But, but I think that's the data that we have.
And one of the things, actually, Laura, if you remember, remember the presentation, one of the things he said is, that, that record report, obviously, is amazing, but you have towns in York County, the towns in Morris County, there's a multiplier, there's a factor there, he tries to look at cost, tries to look at comparable developments. Sometimes he has it, sometimes he doesn't. But a town like Deadville may have a different multiplier, and what comes out of that pool of housing may have $500,000 at one, or a county at one. So there's definitely a hard to, I think, that, you know, means that these numbers are only going to be so bad.
And also, I think the reason why one of the, the number may be slightly off for Estland Lake is the, from what I saw on the Rutgers report, and I would guess that Ross would say the same thing, is there's no taking into account a quote-unquote commuter development near a railroad track that may attract people that don't have families and things like that.
That is what was presented in these chambers when the building was presented.
Yeah. And, and it, it shows, I mean, in this report, it's very, there's basically no more in here that it was a commuter development. I will tell you, I, I listened to a lot of discussion on the Redmond Press, which is the 153 project. And there's no discussion of that being a commuter development. They're not enhancing the railroad station at Mount Haber. That is not a major railroad station. So people are not going to walk from there along the railroad track to get to the Deadville train station. Or they're not going to drive, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to be a New York City commuter development. So that probably gets, you know, gets taken away with a lot of these. But, but these are, these are in here, and I will tell you that everyone that's in here, I believe, has a developer, Steve. Or if they don't, they're, I can tell you, Redmond does, there's already one listed as an intervenor for the next one, two, at least two more. The other one's only a group home. So every, everyone on this list has an intervenor, meaning they've got a developer that's already went to the state with a lawsuit to try to get them to, to push forward. So I would say they're, I would be very surprised if by 2025, these are all not, at least in the, in the face of.
I think the reason why I mention it is because, you know, I'm sure we're all sitting around, who, and mortgage crisis, etc., it's definitely, but I think, because you never know, there's some other, you know, some other factors come into play. But those, those questions, probably those are pretty, pretty, pretty likely that. And then the other ones would be the maybes. You know, like, hey, these are things that have been tossed around. Maybe you can even look at the, at the open parts and say, hey, this has the potential to create an excellent house.
And it's not, it's not an individual development. I said this to Mike before. My opinion is it's not Estland Lake, it's not Redmond, it's not the four houses that are being built off Smith Road, it's not the ones that are built by the post office. It's the addition of all of them. It's 263 units here, that doesn't take into account the five or six houses that are being built off Smith Road that are four-bedroom houses. There's no way a couple that has no fam, no kids or plans to not have kids is buying a four-bedroom, $700 or $800, $1,000 house. That's not happening. So those are families that are moving into those five houses over there. So those are things that hopefully Ross can figure out and talk to the town. Those are, I mean, that's already being built, so that's already a done deal. And there's other parcels of property, too, that are out there that I know are for sale on my neighborhood that are, that are going to be built on houses that are going to be built there. So, um, yeah, I, I think that there's other pieces, it's accumulation of all. 263 plus probably another, you know, 50 that we can think of as one-offs. These numbers start adding up pretty quickly.
Fine, what was the number on the 2.5, the massive land?
263 is after Estland. I want to take it, Estland's already built, it's already done, yeah. I believe it was 263, I have, I mean, 260 something.
150.
Well, we come or 12?
No, it's 12, that's all. That didn't take into account the group home. That was.
Group homes were.
Four units, but I, yeah, I did not take that into account. But all the bigger ones, there's one, there's a couple of bigger ones that are 53 townhomes. There's one that's 150 townhomes. And Redmond was 60, according to the report here. And I think it's bounced around, 54, 57, they're all relevant.
Pretty much adds up.
24, sure.
150, 50.
60, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So these, we can, we can pretty much expect, barring, you know, outside forces, right? That these are going to happen within the next five, maybe five, seven, 10 years, maybe less than five.
So said by 2025 is the anticipation.
So what do you think? Should we move on this, on this demographic update?
No.
What do you think, Barb?
Barb says no.
Don, what you want is gone.
Don Cass is gone.
Yes.
Yes, you should.
Move on it tonight without doing a cross, without.
No, I said like up to 11, I said up to 2,000.
Basically, yeah, basically, uh.
I don't, I was not impressed with Ross Haber the last time. I did not like his report. Anybody could go back and watch the videotape. I didn't like what was in it. I mean, yeah, I understand we're going to save money because he's going to build on that fabulous report. I don't know. I don't have an answer for that.
So you know, you know nothing about affordable housing, you should.
Yeah, I mean, he didn't deal with things that were built and were being built while he did that demographic report. I don't understand how he, has all this knowledge, has come to bear now, that none of it was available to us then.
You mean Estland?
I mean, he didn't deal with the post office.
The lawsuit that's pending.
Yeah, I mean, he didn't deal with any of the building that was happening in town. I don't know.
I mean, I know it's a long ways off, and they go a little way, but that, that wasn't even on the grade level school.
I do remember this board, and it's not all the members being upset with other demographics you had, too. I do remember this board, and it's not all the members being upset with other demographics you had too. I was at that meeting as a citizen.
Well, I, I did ask.
I don't know where else to go.
I asked him about it, and he, and he, and he said it wasn't even on the radar still.
Which one?
About the affordable housing, of course, Ross did that. And then, uh, so, one of the town councilmen out the, uh, market lot, brought us up to date, a couple of stuff to date on the, the affordable housing, it's facing the, uh, basis of the town. And I, I think it's something you have to discuss, it's, it's long-term. So, it's probably gonna be around if that's ever built, but it's, it's definitely gonna be a big impact to the school. We build that many units in Denville, there's gonna be kids with, with, uh, with all of us.
So, so I guess, I maybe hear two different things. I'm hearing that we feel we can handle on this, but we're probably, I'm feeling that Ross has not got it. That he would.
Well, that's, that's something I would consider.
There's a lot of swing. So, the people filing suit are saying that a bunch of towns in New Jersey owe a bunch of affordable, affordable housing. But with the finding enrollment, I'm like, and then back a few years, before I was really paying a bunch of attention. I know you could buy out of your obligations to get it done. Well, there's no, I don't even think there is a doctrine to go by, the New Jersey, the COA stuff. I, I'm kind of Googling, I can't pin on applying, but the lawsuit people is an advocacy room that's throwing a lot in a lot of towns. I don't know. It's not the state of New Jersey, but there's a big swing between two hundred and sixty-three units between now and two thousand and five and six thousand.
But I, I think that's the point of the town is they're trying to come up with a solution to say, we're addressing what we feel is appropriate for our town, and this is what we feel. The interveners, I will tell you, from what I understand from doing research, if the town doesn't come up with a proposal to go in this direction, the interveners, instead of putting a hundred and fifty townhome development over by marshalls, they're gonna push the, their lawsuit, I guarantee, and I, I haven't seen it, but I guarantee is like a three hundred, four hundred thousand, or three or four hundred unit, uh, townhome facility.
It's, it's, they're saying Denville should have six thousand units to comply.
Yes.
Advocacy room. I'm like, I was trying to kind of look.
Yeah, the town, they're showing good faith with giving a proposal that they feel is heading in that direction. In, in Ross Haber's defense, and, and the, the, this plan that the town put out was not put out when Ross, this was about in March of two thousand sixteen. We got that report in December of two thousand fifteen. So, I, I, I don't know if we can push and say, well, he didn't know about these affordable housing units. They, this, nobody knew. It was in a lawsuit that was sealed. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know if we can defend it. I don't, I don't, we don't, without data, how are we gonna go and figure out what we need? And now we're gonna go spend ten thousand, you know, we just spent ten thousand dollars. We might spend eight million dollars, and then go, great, now we need a thirty million dollar school.
Well, it's much of what he does, is he looks at the birds and stuff, like, it's people that are already here. It's not just saying, hey, come on, let's just build six thousand units. We don't, that's the idea.
But that's the point, yeah.
That's what we wanted to do.
But that's the idea behind this, right?
That's the direction we want.
Hypothetically, these, these developments are built. What do we expect then?
That's, that's the number I feel is mine.
This goes back to the coalition of schools, that the remedy that's in place of the state is to see their developers, right? We build a lot of cluster housing and allocate certain, twenty percent of them.
Yeah, that's true.
For low, for low-cost house, okay? Legislature, nobody's come up with a, a realistic viable solution that has such a negative impact on, uh, small suburban towns, uh, such as ours.
Well, that's the point, right? They're, they're not willing to deal with it, so they left courts and developers to deal with it now. So, I mean, you're right now. The point is, we still have to deal with the reality of Redmond, which is special education.
There, there's no, I mean, this is the best plan we have in front of us, right? This is, the only information we have right now is the, is the plan that the town put together in two thousand fifteen that went public in two thousand sixteen. To me, that's the only data that we can go off of right now. I mean, unless the town is willing to give us more information, which I, I'm sure they won't, they're, they're in a lawsuit, they can't give us more information. I mean, they're in the process of, of, of that. I, we can't go off to six thousand, because if we did six thousand, we would have to build a school tomorrow. So, it, it, to me, the best solution is to use the data we have in front of us, which is the town's plan, and come up with what we think is gonna give us the amount of students that come out of that in addition to what we've already currently have on the demography study. And he would extend that out another couple of years, which is helpful. I, I, I'm totally in support of it. I, I, I think, I think without that data, we are, we are not doing our due diligence on understanding long-term what we need as a school district, in my opinion.
And also, my feeling is, if we're gonna sit down with the town without these numbers, then we really don't have a lot to talk. We're basically accepting whatever the town's, for instance, like, oh, there'll be, there'll be no gates coming in. Okay, well, we haven't either, you know. So, to me, I also, I also feel, I mean, I'm not crazy about spending my money. Ross's report wasn't great the first time around, but, um, I think he's in the best position to give us these numbers with that going for the whole, on us.
Can I just say that I was there for his first, his court post. I just saw him last week. And his methodology was explained.
Well, maybe we could send you a copy of his report.
I have a copy. But, um, what I'm saying, I guess, is that right now, his number for Estland Lake is eighteen. And we're at half. So, he's, he's currently at, or he's got five years against the eighteen. The town, now, it sounds like, from listening to you guys, there's a few different numbers, but from somewhere from zero to four. So, I don't know where the demographic or where they got their numbers from, but maybe that's the question. And, you know, if you're gonna sit down and talk about numbers.
I'm less concerned with his numbers and the fact that he didn't actually look at buildings that were being built to add into our demography chart. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the ones that were being built right across from the post office at the time when he gave his report. That construction was going up, and he said, no students will come out of, I mean, buildings were being built at the time.
I don't remember saying no students.
I remember questioning it.
Well, he actually included.
He didn't include it, so isn't that, was it, was it no students?
It was, it wasn't that. That was, that was the issue.
And I, I think what, I, I think what he said was that, it was such, exactly, it was such a small number that.
That's what he said when I asked the question.
If he wanted to, if he wanted to go out, it, it was not significantly enough to change anything in his report.
Okay, but it just didn't seem like it was a complete report.
So, couldn't you extrapolate from that two sixty-three and say, if it's nine on, on that many units, just kind of extrapolate out?
But they're different, that the.
Oh, no, it's a different units.
They're differently, they're, they're just looking at the locations and their structure, like, I mean, different numbers. I mean, they do get to that level. I have to say, Ross, Ross did not address any of the first presentation, uh, and the report wasn't great. Maybe he had a bad level, because the other night, I thought his presentation was excellent.
Yes.
And he really got into a lot of specifics about how they produce these reports. And I came away feeling a lot better about the process, actually, after I got that presentation.
But I'm, I'm feeling a little conflicted because, sitting here listening to you guys about this original presentation, this report, when, when we saw him last week, he had excellent explanation for methodology, to the point that everybody in that town even felt that he's gotta go.
We still wanna figure.
Yes. He talked about affordable housing. He talked, he talked about the age of the units that they would be developed, and how he crafted them in.
And the market value, he was versing the market values, how to check, how to, uh, justify the multipliers.
He was in the portable housing century. There are many issues that he addressed.
He even drilled down to the, you know, the idea about, uh, affordable units, drawing in a certain percentage of special education, or some nominee. There, there was a lot more detail, I think, in his comments than I heard before.
So, would we be better served rather than doing a ten thousand dollar space study? Instead of new demographer, or make you feel better about Ross? And, and, you know, have some different types of scenarios, future population of Denville, and the instantly student count? You know, and, and I'm, you'd have to go ten, at least ten years down the road. And it must be somebody that can extrapolate, you know, like, based on our, we got a lot of, uh, townhomes in Denville now. Um, you know, how many kids, one percent of those townhomes, you send kids to our, our, our district schools? And if you did more townhomes, and sing, sing a family, you understand the billing, you know, one percent would bring more kids into our, our schools than any. You know, I bet, you know, it's, it's a catch twenty-two. You know, whether it's two billion or ten million dollars, it may not be out of them. Just like when they, when they did the expansion on Lakeview. Once the expansion was done, students moved in, the school was at the pass. There's no room for additional students in the school after they did the addition. So, you certainly don't want to do that to the, uh, people that are going on the board in the future, that they, and you're paying off a, uh, a bond on expansion, and now, now you have to either put trailers on the grounds or, or build another school.
One of the things I found odd as a resident was, when the board, prior to any of you, uh, put out the, uh, running middle schools, sixty million dollars, you have to have this, you know, there's no way we're gonna be able to house anybody if this is passed, the world's gonna come to an end. Basically, once it failed, you never heard another word about it.
Well, that wasn't prior to us. That was some of us wrong.
But it wasn't, it wasn't like there was like a second plan, like, wow, all right, the sixty million dollar one is gone. Let's put out another vote for a smaller one, or do X, Y, Z. So, you know.
Well, that's because the referendum was pulled because of what happened in the economy, feeling that the community couldn't support it. So, it didn't matter if you couldn't support this, you couldn't support anything. So, we did. We hunted and went to trailers.
When was that?
Well, as I look in my emails, it was two thousand and eight, when we were moving towards a new middle school.
Two thousand and eight was supposed to vote? We never voted on it.
We never voted on it. We polled it. We didn't go out to referendum. The board decided that that economy was not in the place to put any more debt on the community.
You had a recession, and then you had two, two major storms in town. You had the flood, and then you had the mid-October snowstorm that, that destroyed a lot of the infrastructure.
Yeah, there was, and we decided, just as you said in your presentation the other day, or you go with status quo. Well, the board basically decided to make do with what we had and create the additional classrooms through trailers and not deal with the large space issues, which have been an issue for the board, but were too much money to deal with. And there was much grassroots effort against it, and no, there was grassroots effort for it, but it was just overwhelming.
What, what are our?
Just really about.
Just really about whether we might give, uh, students, we get, uh, the ability to, to follow the policy.
What are our kindergarten enrollments?
The total.
It's one class.
Next year.
Next year, seventeen.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, 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 I think to be able to come to the plan, we need to have the data, and I don't understand. You know, if, if we don't give the data to the town, the town's gonna get the data from the developer, I guess. And we're gonna give, we got last time, which was, nothing's gonna come out of it. The developer's not gonna wanna tell you. You're gonna have, you know, twenty kids come out of there, or a hundred kids come out of those developments. They're, I mean, that's, that's where they're gonna get their data from, I believe. I, I would imagine, not knowing, not being sitting out there when they talk about it, I, I, I would bet you that, that data came, they didn't hire a demographer. They got the data from the developer, uh, who presented it. So, in my opinion, if we don't get the data for ourselves, like, like Dino said, we're gonna go to the town, and they're gonna say, well, you're not gonna get that many that come out of it. I, I think we need to come up with data to say, hey, guys, listen, this is what this means for the district. We're all a big team here. We all want the best thing for the town, for those kids in, in the town. Uh, this is what it means, and, and where does that leave us? And, and then that leads into the discussion of pilot, which we haven't really discussed, although it's open to discussion items, which, you know, I mean, if the town understands what the effect on the district is, that may influence their decision on whether it's a pilot program or not. So, if we give them data, that, that will help them understand, will let us kind of, you know, be part of their conversation.
And that was the other part of the presentation, uh, final part of the presentation. At the end of the day, as board, we can have really no influence over, I will read the reference to our son's spot. We pretty much have to go all the way through it. Um, the way we can influence that is by getting a really good data and basically making the news. Saying why something shouldn't be a pilot, maybe it should be a pilot, but there should be evidence, such as, you should, it's all about. But you know, we have to have data to really make a vote.
We don't have data right now about how this pilot program is working, or something?
No, we do. We don't need to know the next one. Redmond Press won't go after that. Is that, is that.
We can, we can change what happened in the last, but we certainly, we have to understand what the effect is on the future.
Right.
Yeah, we use the data from.
From the current one to show the.
We've got, however, what was it, eight kids from there? Nine kids?
I don't know.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, and they, they're telling you it's done?
It's the townhouse school that they're doing.
Right, they're.
And just to be clear, just to be clear, the Redmond Press this, uh, project right now has been deemed as a rehabilitation area, that area. It has not been deemed as a pilot. That gives them the ability to make it a pilot program if they wish. However, they have not deemed it to be a pilot at this point. That's my understanding, and, you know, it's from talking to everybody, and that seems to be what happened at this point. However, there hasn't been a lease of discussion on whether it should be a pilot or not a pilot. Clearly, the developers are going to ask for it to be a pilot. If I'm a developer, I'm asking to not pay taxes.
Everyone knows it's a pilot, that's right. All the board members?
You know, I, I'm gonna change, I'm gonna change my mind, Rob. We've had a good discussion here. You know, until you get a better handle on what the population is, something's going to be in the town. I, I think it's, I think even if it's not a hundred percent accurate, it gives you a more of a guideline of what's needed in terms of expanding the schools and what's needed. There's a lot of pieces to it, but if you really don't know what is, what's gonna happen five years from now, ten years from now, what's the, uh, impact of those additional students on the school? I mean, you might have to use the music class back out into the, uh, trailers now. I, I think we gotta have a better understanding of what the, uh, futures. We lost a lot of students. We're down to sixteen hundred in Chang or sixty-seven-one, sixty-seven. Yeah, so, that's a big drop. We were at twenty-two hundred, right? What we were talking about, the middle schools, so. But if all this building gets done, you could be right back up there, right back up there again. So, I, I really think you gotta have a better understanding of the numbers. And I, I think, I would think the citizens would appreciate doing that kind of due diligence, uh, holding these variables out there that are within that town population and the school population for you to make a decision on what, what to expand, what to build in the schools. It just may not be enough.
The, uh, the Ross Haber report that we, that the board received in, what was it, the end of two thousand and fifteen? That was right before I started my term. Is it possible that somebody has all of that? I know I got the pre, can you, can you link that to me? I got the presentation.
I'm sure there's got more.
I would appreciate it, yeah, cause I got the presentation data here. I actually wanna read the report before I'm willing to say whether or not we should give him, give him more money for more data.
And, and one of the things that concerned me also is just, so when I look at the last couple of years, so, he was pretty close on the first year out. But then, if this year is higher, um, I'm getting concerned because we had one, we, he had the, the slightly going down. One forty-three last year, we had one forty, we have one thirty-five this year right now, so, we're pretty close. He had one forty, and if we jump up to one fifty-seven, I'd like to kind of tweak in on the next couple of years, because he uses historical data to be able to run numbers forward. So, um, I'd be interested to see if we can push it out another year or two. I'm glad that's a good idea, because it, it also may affect not only that extra year, but he may actually look at the next three years and adjust those three years for what's happened now this year. Um, so, and, and that's gonna, once again, have an effect. Like I said, that's why I asked that question. If it's one forty and it's, it's one forty-five, no big deal, you know, it's not another section. But at some point, there's a tipping point to another section. And then Sandy just mentioned too, like, it depends on what the breakdown in special ed and, you know, small class setting and, and full class. So, I, I, I think it's a good idea to have data. The more data we have right now, we need it. We're talking about big projects, and I don't wanna just do a, I don't wanna put a mandate on this. I wanna fix the problem, I wanna know if we, or look at.
We also don't wanna spend millions of dollars and not spend a couple of thousand dollars to.
Yes, we save two thousand, plus those ten million.
So, Don, I hear, I heard a change of, I heard a change of feeling down there?
Yeah, I mean, I, you think Ross was a little short, or I don't know how the other people feel. You do something there, or find somebody else. And I don't know what you wanna do about it, ten thousand.
And I don't know what you want to do about the ten thousand dollars, if we just voted on to, you know, have a, a, a time.
We, character for Ross Dean, but we do vote on, but it doesn't mean that tomorrow, you have to call E I and tell them, yes, it means.
We could, we could stay.
I can tell them that we're looking at updating our department's report. Please start the process, take that into account, that we'll have that data.
He's got to do some research right now, so he can do some research and then.
Stay with that. You don't have to pull the trigger.
And I can tell, I can tell them to, you know, it's not like you have to do it, okay? I can tell, for now, you can start working on what you're, you know, you can do it on a slow back. But we may, we may want to push it a month.
But the good part is you don't have to wait for a meeting to get approved again, because as soon as we get the data ready to go, you can move.
I'm still, I'm sending it to everybody.
I have not received it yet, so.
Okay, there it is.
Did you take it from the district website?
No, I think she had it.
Does it have the white hole on you or just that?
Facility's presentation.
He would like that.
I gave, I think I gave you guys that.
I would like everything you can send me. Okay, I searched demography, I didn't get.
What if the facility's presentation is.
There's a number you can go get.
Yeah.
So let's click here with this offer for his report, twenty fifteen.
I only see the twenty fifteen one.
That's the white hole, but not there. I got the white hole.
All right, I'm sorry. And right now, we're in a holding pattern about, do you need one more vote, and then you'll be done? Well, I agree that, I told you.
I've got this one, we've got this, I've got this wish wash, yes, so I was kind of holding.
Well, it's going to take you more time than, we probably have to like, to crunch through all of this. So are you looking to do, uh, vote to go ahead tonight, or vote in our first meeting in?
I think, I think I'd rather get Boo behind, because he said a lot of proposals will be tomorrow. He said it'll be under two thousand dollars.
I'd like to give a guess, like, to do, to do something about social housing.
That would be my turn.
Well, I want us talking to the town, and I want us to be able to have some kind of, so I will give you my yes vote. Not wishy-washy. I was very wishy-washy before, but.
Just read one out. You want me to read it? You can write it down.
A math, so it's two thousand, so we make a lot.
What resolution is it?
So it's undefined, and she's going to be getting her set. I would make a motion. You guys read the motion item, but I.
To approve Ross Haver associates update the two thousand and fifteen demographic study for costs of up to two thousand dollars.
Is you saying that enough, Laura?
So moved.
Uh, to approve Ross Haver to update the demographic study for, uh, up to two thousand dollars.
We use Ross Haver or somebody else?
Well, unless we want to start all over again, we have to use Ross. Under two thousand.
All right, no, it's got to be, it's got to be done.
I'll, I'll call you later.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Yeah. Is this Nancy? Yes. Is this Lauren?
Just saying.
Is Warren? Yes. Mr. Powell?
Yes. Okay, all right, thank you. I think we, yeah, I don't have a public comment. Anything else before I open the public comment? Uh, we'll open the public comment at ten thirty-five P M. Seeing no one, closed public comment also at ten thirty-five P M.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have an E three.
Exactly. Sorry.
No.
You chirped a little too early. Yeah, Mr. Luer, do members into executive place?
Just because I seconded it.
Yes.
We won't be voting.
I would like to move to convene an executive session in accordance with section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss legal, uh, personnel legal and negotiation issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public, but the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All in favor? Yay. Opposed?
Yay.
Yay.
Did I get three? I got three names. Any extensions? Yes, three names. All right, we're in executive.
We won't be voting.
We're in, yes, we will not be voting. Thank you all for coming.
He's going to have to wait. He's going to have to wait. I'm sorry, take the camera out.
Ten thirty-six.